Okay, that's my workout, I'm ready to go home.
Time to go on?
Yeah.
All right, good evening, everybody. Tonight is Tuesday, October 12th. It's the monthly meeting of the planning board at the Veterans Memorial Building. If everyone could stand, please, and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Our first item on the agenda is a deliberation and vote on special permit application with site plan approval for 1480 and 1486 Main Street. Proposed construction of marijuana cultivation facility for GTE Millis LLC. And I just want to let everybody know that the public hearing has been closed, so we will not be able to accept any comments from anybody on this.
No, we're not reading it, we don't read anything.
You have to do what you do to revoke on a waiver because I have everything going there.
Okay, which one?
Yep.
Okay, hold on. All right, so with it, we have to actually go back. We voted on some waivers and upon review with council, we are actually having to re-vote on those. So on waiver number one from the applicant, waiver sought from section two, requirement for parking space to be at least nine feet width and 21 feet length, having an area of less than 189 square feet. Proposed parking spaces are 10 feet width and 20 feet width, having an area of 200 square feet. With that, town council suggested that we reject that waiver because that does not meet our bylaw. We had voted in allowing it however we worked, that was not within our right. So I make a motion that we reject waiver seeking a waiver for the parking space size.
Second.
All right, motion's been made, any comments? None. All right, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we rejected that waiver. The next one is a waiver sought from number eight, table five, requiring one loading space per 15,000 square feet or any fraction thereof in that area. With a building footprint of 73,800 square feet, a total of five loading spaces are required. Two loading spaces are proposed for the project based on the needs of the cultivation facility. With that, you guys are building the building for yourself, that's fine with me. So I make a motion that we approve the waiver number two for the reduction of loading docks.
Okay.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, any comment from the board? All right, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Third one is a waiver is sought from section seven, C2, FFP, requirement for 46 trees. A total of nine trees are proposed for the project. Due to the nature of the cultivation facility, trees draw insects which can find their way into the building, be harmful to the crop. In lieu of plantings, the applicant is proposing to donate the town of Millis Tree Fund in agreement with the tree ward. And we actually had an amount on that on our previous one, which I'll have to look up. See if I can find the first.
Seven.
Okay, there we go. Right, so that would be, we have a specific thing. So I'm actually going to read what we had put in. Waiver sought for the parking lot loading standards, the off-street parking and loading regulations by law to allow the plant nine trees where 46 are required. The nine trees shall be a mix of evergreen and deciduous trees to ensure year-round foliage. And a donation of $700 a tree will be made to the town of Millis for the remaining 37 trees for a total donation of $25,900. I make a motion that we approve that waiver.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, any comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good. All right, so the next thing is we just go ahead and...
Any things that are highlighted or just things that you need to just confirm that they're put together, okay?
Okay.
What is decided, which if you want to add?
Yeah, so on, just as this for the applicant. We, what we found, have found on some projects, we have the work hours. And so what we're asking for the sign on that is, it's not a big deal. One of the projects they did the sign and they used a poster board and letters were about this tall. So what we're asking on that is six-inch high letters like they do for building, you know, for like building numbers, so it can be seen from the street. That's one request that we're going to make on that on number 11. Do I have to vote on that?
No. But now, do you like one of that?
Yeah, that's fine, that's perfect. Okay, right, and then upon advice from town council on number 35, it says, "The special permit shall be limited to the original applicant and is not transferable without a hearing. The vote of the planning board to modify this special permit and site plan approval such here is to consider the suitability to transfer E as well as any other conditions that the planning board may recently impose on those zoning bylaws." And that was taking their lang, the language that was proposed.
The public had suggested and a town council reviewed and that's there.
Right, so on that one, basically, it does allow, we had done it where it was not transferable.
Right, that was not original.
Right, that was original, so on this one, we made a change on that. And the other thing is in number 36, "The special permit shall lapse if the permit holder ceases operation of marijuana established for a period of 90 days or upon expiration termination or non-renewal of the applicant's license issued by the CCC." We extended that, I think we had it before.
It was 30 originally and the applicant proposed 90 to 120.
90 was the, 90 was what town council... So that basically gives them some breathing room that there has, happens to be a hiccup, which makes sense to me. All right, so we can vote on this? Yeah, go ahead, George.
One thing, and maybe we should do something like this down the road, because these have loading docks. And I don't think there's going to be an issue, but there is a mass law that you can't idle trucks more than five minutes. And I think if they have a loading dock and they idle it too long, stuff's going to go into the building. So can we add in there that they need to add, and it's a mass general law, it's not something we're picking out of the hat. I can't remember what they, which one it is, but something in their loading dock that they can't have trucks idling for more than five minutes.
A sign? You want a sign?
Yeah, just a sign on the loading dock, which you see in most warehouses today.
Okay, we'd have to write that in there, but that's fine. I don't care, we can put that, where would you put that?
We'll put that the next number.
I don't remember what, I'd have to look it up, but it's...
Yeah, we'll just put it in the mass general law.
Number 40.
Number 40, all right, I'm fine with adding number 40, just to put up signage for no idling trucks more than five minutes.
I'm going to find it for you now.
Yeah, it's mass general law, it's chapter, it's chapter 90. Oh, God, I can't remember which one it is now. It's probably something we should put in, any of them that, you know.
Does it matter what district it is?
No, it's a state law. If you go into rest areas on the Pike or anything like that, there's a sign when you drive through. It's a, it's a, it's chapter 90, I can't remember what section.
16A.
16A.
Chapter 90, 16A, "No person shall cause, suffer, allow, or permit the unnecessary operation of an engine of a motor vehicle while said vehicle is stopped for a foreseeable period of time in excess of five minutes."
Right, all right, so I'll add them before you there.
What'd you say, was it chapter 90, 16A?
16A.
Okay, that's all.
All right, anyone else?
Camille, what was the highlight of our names?
Well, that was just to know that I have to change that if there's any change. That wasn't a definitive, that was just to make note if I had to make any change or something that's absent or...
Okay.
All right, well, if there are no other questions or comments, I make a motion that we approve the special permit. Yeah, okay, yeah, I make a motion.
Camille?
Yeah.
On those, my name's not listed as voting in the affirmative.
Yep, I will make sure that, let me see, that's just for me to make it happen.
Okay.
I will definitely take care of that.
All right, and we'll try this again, ready? All right, I make a motion that we approve the special permit for GTE Millis LLC for the 1480 and 1486 Main Street, Millis Mass marijuana facility.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, any other comment? All right, all in favor, we'll do this by roll call, so I'm going to do it from the end. Josh?
Aye.
All right, Alan?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
And Nicole?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so pass me on this one. So, all right, well, good, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And good luck.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Since helping in passing our trial, we can now start to open the remarks off the board.
Thank you.
You guys be mindful when you sign.
All right, item number two would be special. Special permit application with site plan approval, 871 Main Street, Millis Dunkin' Donuts. Proposed renovations for drive-up menu board, signage, and facade. And this would be Mr. Michael Cavalo.
Can I take a seat?
Yeah, please, why don't you...
I have to open the... Town of Millis offers the planning board members a public hearing. In accordance with the provisions of chapter 48, section 11, mass general law, the planning board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October 12th, 2021, at 7:40 PM in the Veterans Memorial Building, room 229, 900 Main Street, Millis, on the application of Michael Cavalo, I'm sorry, Cavalo. Millis Donuts, Inc., 871 Main Street, requesting a special permit under section 13, special permit conditions, paragraph C. Site plan review of the zoning bylaws of the town of Millis for renovations of exterior signage and modification of drive-up menu board for property located at 871 Main Street, Millis, Mass., map 24, parcel 53. Copy of the application and site plan is on file in the office of the town clerk and on the planning board's webpage. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should appear at the time and place designated. Richard Nichols, Chair.
All right, and now, could you just give us an overall executive summary of what you guys are planning to do in there, including if there's any changes to the facade that you're going to do with the building?
Sure, good evening, thank you for your time today, board members. I'm Michael Cavalo, I run and own the Dunkin' Donuts in town here. And we have since, since it's opened. And every, as you're aware, that every 10 years we're due to remodel and refresh these, these locations. And we've been going through various towns and trying to improve the assets that we have in the town to make them, to make them nicer and better. In this particular case, this store's, has been last refreshed 10 years ago, believe it or not, and a drive-through was added. We begin, we always diagnosing what, you know, what makes the stores better. And in this case, we've decided that more time between the drive-through board and the window is better for the crew members to prepare the food and the drinks that have gotten more complex as time goes on. So what we're looking to do in this case is move the, move the board back, which into the queue about 14 feet. That's first and foremost the biggest thing. And we'd be asking, if possible, to add a digital menu board and speaker tower that all QSRs are going to these days. It's an all-in-one electronic board. And I think it's the same ones that most of the brands are going to and that all the Dunkins are going to. And we relocate that back about 14 feet. In addition to that, if the board so allows us, we're looking to just update our signs. We are no longer Dunkin' Donuts, I'm sure as many of you know, we are now Dunkin'. And the signs would be the same size, just the same materials, non-illuminated. They would just say Dunkin', and I think I've provided all the pictures there for your review. Just throw a couple more at you, just, we can just cross them off. There's a, on the side of the building, we add the touch, Millis runs on Dunkin'. It's not really considered a sign, I'm not sure how the town, Millis views it. It would not be illuminated, but it just, it just says Millis and then a person. I forget what they call that, like running and then the word Dunkin' spelled out.
I'm sorry, sir, where would that be?
I believe there was a picture there on the side of a board that would show that it was, it's... On the sidewall, it was like, it would be...
Well, we can circle back to that.
Okay, okay.
I apologize, and then there's an interior refresh. The bigger one that I would also like to bring your attention to is the front of the building. There is above the door, and what we're looking to do is there's a window and an old Dunkin' Donuts sign. What we would be adding is just a casing that goes up, it's the hardybacker cement board that goes up, and we would remove the window and the word Dunkin' would be there as well. There's a metal case that goes above it now, above the door. It would now become, that would come down, and it would be the cement board that they're using, that is just much nicer looking effect for the front of the building. But other than that, there's, there's not much on the building itself that's being done. Drive-through window is staying where it's at. As I mentioned, the order point is trying to move back a little bit, but those are the, not cliffhills, but those are the items here, we can tackle one by one if we think...
All right, so can, I just want to start at, so do you guys have the pictures? So I'm looking at your, do you have yours, copy?
I, I did not bring it, I apologize.
We can share.
I printed them off, so I can go over them with you one by one, so I do apologize for that.
No, that's fine, here, take, take that one, yeah. Camille, you have one, yeah. So, yeah, I'm looking at your pictures.
Please, yes. Yep.
All right.
Yes.
There we go. And let's see, can they see it from the, the home? So on that one, the first picture, it looks like what you want to do is take the existing menu board in the back and you want to just move it towards the other corner of the building?
It would, it would come back, it's not, it's not an angle, it's not ideal right now. It's not an angle, the cars don't really get close enough to it. So if we move it back, the window would be parallel to the, to the board itself, and it'd be, it's a lot more conducive to ordering.
But basically, it's, you're taking it from, if you're looking at the building from the back, you're taking it from the right-hand side and you're moving to the left?
To the center of the building.
To the center.
To the center, yes. The door's on the back right corner, as you were talking to.
All right, so basically it stayed in the back of the building?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So one of the other things that, when this initially went through, one of the concerns of the neighbors was the volume of speakers. So obviously, you would probably be aware of that. And this is, would this be, it's usually, it's pretty well lit down there. So this, this would not be, the lighting in this is not going to be any, anymore or different.
The current menu board, although it's not digital, it is interiorly illuminated.
Yeah.
And now, what they're doing is they're going to, it's just, it's, it's like a TV is what it is, a monitor TV that's still controlled the same way, it can be shut off, goes dark.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
This digital board, will that, when the stores close, will that board be shut down?
Goes dark, yes.
Okay, great, so that's not going to be reflecting into the neighbor right behind them at 2 AM.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
On this digital board, is the volume going to be the same as the old one?
Right, so, so the board would not have actual volume, the only volume still comes from the headset coming from the speaker. So nothing would, nothing would change in that regards.
And if, and if there was an issue with that, you guys can address that?
We've, it's been the same neighbor for, for a long time. I think we have an open line of communication.
Okay, that's, okay. All right, the other question we had on it was with the signs themselves. So the sign in the front, the, your Dunkin' Drive-Thru sign, one of the things that we like to do in Millis is have a wood sign. So what Ms. Vierid had done is, on the previous owner, they had tentatively, or had actually put up this, and George?
They had your basic Dunkin' Donuts, you know, sign that they had for 100 years, okay? And it was interiorly lit. And I asked him if he would change it to match the other signs in town, and he did. Took him about a month, he had this made, and had this, this wooden sign with the gold letters, okay? And it's been there for, I don't know, how long's it been, 20 years?
That, that one, I would say is probably 10 years, but...
No, this, this was put in about six months after the store opened.
Okay.
Okay, so it's been there however long the store's been. And I don't know what they did with the other sign, but I think its name was Andre?
That's my father-in-law, yes.
That's your father, okay, so he, he went and paid for that and did it wherever the other sign went. So we're trying to keep still a village effect.
Understood.
And, you know, the gold and the red is very nice, and I know those are your corporate colors, but...
Well, George, with that, if, if they did a wood sign, let's, if we say, hey, listen, if you do a, if you did a wood sign with the Dunkin', would that work?
Yeah, yeah.
I think that, in fact, the idea on that is, you know, we see those everywhere. At, you know, New York City, at Boston, we're not even one of those. So our, our goal here would be to have, you could have that logo, and we would like to see if we could have that on the wood signs here, like the rest of them.
If I can, if I can answer, it's...
Yeah.
Apologize, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, on page A02, there's a rendition of a sign which seems to be more in tune with our current signage, and it's very different than what you have here in this photograph.
Right.
What number is it?
Oh, page 02. If anything, it is the question, sorry, my job.
If I can answer, I believe that the sign that we have now is not wood, it's, it's considered foam board, it's considered a foam.
Oh, that's my, God.
That, that weathers, I mean, that, that sign, what I will do is, it's really going to be the exact same sign with, with Dunkin', as opposed to Dunkin' Donuts. But if you have, if you have a different way you'd like to see the sign, if it's on that, if it's on the bottom left-hand corner there of those sides, I can have the vendor, it's the same vendor that did the last one for me, I'll just give them this, and they manufacture it themselves, so.
Mr. Chairman, the two renditions are very different. It's a large square sign, whereas you have more of a colonial effect with a rounded top on the rendition here.
So, yeah. Yeah, this one, yeah. So we, just, what we're asking on that is, would you, you would be doing more like A0.2, the sign that shows?
Right, so, so you want the finials, the finials there, I think that's what they call those, and the rounded top, and it would say Dunkin' and Drive-Thru, as you see on the, on plants, A0.2?
I don't really care if it has finials on it, it's just, I think the idea is the two posts, if it had the curve on it like the Dunkin', like you see there, and that would be fine.
Okay.
If you could have it look like that, that would be great.
Sure.
I mean, if you want to put the finials on it, you can.
Sure. Honestly, I keep it simple, I'll just say, this is the sign, let's just, let's just make that. The poles are going to remain the same, they take those off, the new posts go over them, and they can fabricate what I tell them to fabricate.
That's great. And then the only other thing was, you do have some smaller, like signage boards?
The entrance ones as well, I mean, we'll follow, we'll follow that same type of pattern. If you look on A0.2 as well, up in the, it's a directional sign. What we'll do is, the, we can mirror the post to be the same, and then what we will do is, we'll use that and just say Dunkin', and we'll put enter, and then Dunkin' and exit, because it's a one, one way in, one way out.
So basically, if it looks very similar to what you had, and then the change in the logo, that would be, it worked before, so we, we would, that would work for us, at least for me.
Well, yeah, because there, if you look at, on this larger photo, the, the posts as well, not considering the finials, but the layout of the post itself is, I don't, I don't know what the actual material is, but it's, it has...
It has the lines, the three, the lines.
Yeah, so it looks like it's a carved wooden post, whereas in this large photograph, it looks like a plastic. We're just, with the entrance and ignorant signs, and then your main sign, we're looking to maintain something, the feel of just a village district, and not like the big plastic that you'd see in the, in, you know, in any city.
Yep.
But the, you know, obviously, the color scheme and changing it, taking out donuts and putting in Drive-Thru, that's, that's not an issue at all. Yeah, but you can just have that similar to the way it is now, because it does, I mean, it's lasted long, so I'm assuming it's not wood. But it looks great, it's, you know, it's got, it has a really nice, as you're driving by.
Sure, thank you.
And then the only question that was, going back to your, run on Dunkin's, wherever that was, the little, the extra, ooh, extra painting on the side.
Yeah, A3.2.
It was either the page before.
A3.2.
Yeah, right, that was there. So...
Yeah, it's right there.
Yeah, so with that, that's painted on the wall?
No, I'm sorry, that's, that is, again, the hardy, they called it, it's a cement board, it comes off of the, off of the cement, off of these, this is a block building, and those are actual letters that are drilled into the wall. So it's not, it's not anything cheap. I mean, again, most of the towns, I should have brought you a better picture, but, you know, we've put them in everywhere we go. If the town elects, if the town says that's considered signage and way, oh, much, I just say that to the, you know, that it's struck and we move on.
So they get, like, I'm just thinking of Lake Cravings, they have more than one sign. Well, the coffee shop, the, what is it?
Yeah, they've got the one in front.
They've got a sign like two banners. So if they have, they have the, they have the one, they're allowed one in the building. So that would be considered a second one in the building if they did that.
Yes, that's what I was going to ask about.
No, the way, the way we read it, that any, any letter on a wall is considered sign. So I think according to bylaw would be, and that's the building inspector's jurisdiction.
Just because, because it says Millis, not Stephen, reason why?
I don't know, that's a good question. So if that goes to, that goes to the building inspector, so if, if we said we didn't care, we'd leave it up to his discretion? That would be, I mean, that's if the board decided that...
Well, if we grant him a waiver...
It would be a waiver, yeah.
Yeah.
Then, if we grant him a waiver, then that shouldn't go to his discretion.
And it does say Dunkin', it doesn't just say Millis.
No, I know, I get it, I know, I get it, so that's, yeah. And plus, the question is, are we opening Pandora's box and having multiple signs, so?
Yeah, I don't like it, I don't like what the donut shop has either, but I was on the board at the time.
What if, can you put it on the front of the building? Because you've got this new sign, this is on A3.3, that's your new sign on the front?
Yeah.
Could you put, that word Dunkin' on that sign and then put Millis in smaller letters underneath it?
They typically just like to keep the front same, I mean, if, if it's easier for the board, I'll just, I'll just withdraw that, and, you know, I mean, it's, it's very low on the request list here, honestly. So if you, if you have, if you have, you know, a pause about it, then I totally respect that, and I can remove that.
All right, why don't we just, then we'll just take them off, we'll take off the side one, and we'll leave the front one.
Understood. If I could back up to, just to call out again, the, the front there, that is probably the only other piece to the exterior of the building that I am touching, that I'd just like to call out as well. That, that goes above now, it goes a little bit higher, there used to be a window there, I think it shows in one of the other existing renditions, there is a window there. And we are removing that window and just bringing the sign, just a, you know, a bit higher to cover that window, that is of no use, there's, there's an attic in that building, there's, there's nothing. As you look at the front page, you see the demolition piece there, and there is, there is something already there, that metal box is there that the sign sits on. So we're just removing that and giving the front of the building, you know, in my opinion, a better, a better look, and a better visual to the front there. so we're just removing that and giving the front of the building, you know, in my opinion, a better, a better look, and a, a better visual to the front there, if the board is...
Did, did you spell out what that, is that going to be?
That is, it's a cement board.
Okay.
It is a cement board, it's a...
And it's the wood color.
And the colors.
Yeah.
And the Dunkin' sign is, it's exteriorly illuminated, it doesn't show it very well, but there is a light bar above the, above the front of that, above it there, that that cascades a, a small amount of light down over the sign.
All right, well, that's not terrible. Oh, and Melissa, so Melissa did a review letter on that, just while we were doing that, do you want to actually, Melissa, was there anything in your review letter that was?
You, you already hit on the first couple things there.
Because I read, I read your letter.
Okay. The wall signs are going to be exterior illuminated with LED light, those are going to be white, correct?
I'm, I'm sorry, the...
The lighting, the exterior lighting that's shining on the sign, it will be white?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. We talked about the standing sign, the directional sign, just a reminder that general advertising signs are not allowed. And then, I think we already talked about the drive-up window, and the, the messaging is going to stay the same, so that be the same condition that was previously included. And then, just referring to the board as far as the architectural modification on the front, and the visual character of the neighborhood. We did look at the traffic, had the traffic, per traffic engineer take a look, and we didn't think there would be any change due to moving the signboard.
Right. Now, just a question for you, on that one, when they went through and did it the first time, so that had, that had two preparing stations in it, do you guys still have that, or not?
Oh, we do not, we do not, we have, we have one senior station, and we're actually on the, on the interior plans. We're going to move it closer to the window and, and make it bigger, but we do not have two afterwards. It, it just was something that we were using, when, when we went back to do that afterwards, we were servicing the front counter with one station, and the drive-thru with another one, and it just was, it was not as working as efficiently as just making it bigger and focusing on that, you know? I mean, I think that, what I would say is that we've gotten better, we've gotten better with the operations in the store
Yeah.
from when we first launched it and everything, and I remember having to, you know, with our attorney at the time, go back and continually looking at things backing up into the street. Now, does it still back up into the street? Unfortunately, it probably does at some points, but, you know, I mean, the, the drive-thru, especially with the learnings from the pandemic, has been, that's the way most customers in the last nineteen months have, have used most locations when possible, so it's put a stress on that, but, you know, I think through and through, we've done a pretty good job of managing that business.
No, what I understand, like, when we would go to soccer games and stuff with the kids, I mean, everybody gets out at the same time, and you've got a, a whole gang of people, so I got that you have, you know, unexpected flows at times, so. I don't, go ahead.
I would say, Mr. Chairman, to your credit, when this, when the, the, the first year or two that the drive-thru went in, there was, there were multiple issues, and I work from home here in town, and I'm around town all the time, and you not seeing that same, you know, backing up in both directions, and it does, it has been, over the last few years, it's operating much, much better.
I will tell you that, and you've probably seen this, is that we've been the benefit of, as opposed to everybody going to work at one point, the, the people's delay times have kind of aided, have aided the business in the times of people going, right? So now you even get some people coming later, and, and, and that flow has helped us navigate the business the last nineteen months, so it's... We're, we're learning a lot, and, you know, we've added a lot more food, and, and the drinks have gotten more complex, but we've rolled with it, you know, and even with the health problems, we, we just do the best we can, and, you know, like I said, I've been here since day one, so, you know, I'm always, I'm, I'm always around, so take pride in running the stores.
All right, so, I mean, other than we, we eliminated the, let's see, we, we made the, we asked to have the boards similar to the signs, similar to the old ones, we asked you to remove the, the extra sign. I don't think there was anything else that jumped out at me, so.
If, if I can ask, I just apologize, one more thing that, that I saw on the plans, and again, if, if it's, if it's, is, I, there's a height bar there that I would be installing, it just prevents people from trucks if they come close to it. We install a height bars, it's just, it's not a sign, is that considered a sign in anything? It would be closer to that back door, as you mentioned.
Yeah, that's fine.
Right there. I'm sorry, it's on page A O two, next to the sign.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, that's you protecting it, you don't have a problem.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, that's, that says Drive-Thru, that's more just a direction, sorry, that's not a...
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Are you going to shut the store down when you do this?
Yeah, we've, you know, I, I will tell you that I, I wanted to try to get this in, that's another question I should ask you. I wanted to try to get this in for the end of the year, but, but the, with the lead times and the supply times with things, I probably would not, might honestly be looking at March or April, but to answer your question specifically, it would be close, I've been averaging two weeks, maybe more. If, if you were to grant me this, how long do I have? Just because it probably is, with the weather and getting a permit and getting some...
How long, how long, how long?
Usually, I get to put it...
Three years.
Oh, okay, sometimes it's six months, and I might have to come back for, for an application like this, but, okay. So yes, I would be closed throughout it, yes, it makes more sense for us to close.
Mr. Chair, just one, one point, could you just clarify real quick where the limit bar would be placed? I'm just looking at the schematic, and I don't quite see.
That's a very good question, I will...
I think it's on this one?
Oh. Six.
Yeah, I just didn't see number six placed, I saw the striping details, but I'm just curious for aesthetic purposes as well, maybe it's best near the, the corner right?
I would say, yeah, I mean, if, 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 I, I, in this case, though, the, the one thing that I do want to say is that the, it's usually, it's usually before the speaker tower, because as I, as I back up here, this, this type of all-in-one speaker tower is illuminated, and it has a small cover over it, so that the person ordering doesn't get wet, so I would say to you that it's going to be closer to, you know, where, where the car is to the, where it says two on A O two.
Yeah, upper, upper right corner.
It's going to say closer to that right there, and that's, you know, if that's okay with the board, I'd, I'd make sure that it stays closer to there prior to the...
Yeah, it's on the backside?
Yeah, I think that's much better.
Yeah, that, that good question, Joshua, yeah, no, if you could make sure it was on the backside, that would be the best. All right, now, the only other question we had was, was there any problem with the fence in the back, or was that taken care of?
I didn't see it.
Problem, I mean, it looked in good shape when I went over there.
Yeah, no, I just couldn't remember, so.
And there's three big trees, at least three big trees.
Yeah.
Three big trees that have, that have fallen with the storms that we've had, all points have fallen, but, you know, like I said, we've worked with the neighbor to get that rectified.
All right, anyone else with a go, or?
Just one, one question, I know on the entrance, there's, there is a sign, something about do not stack or something. Could you add a sign that do not, just do not block the sidewalk? There's something about, says do not stack.
I thought that we, I thought we ended up adding when it's a, a crosswalk, I can, I can double-check that for you.
I think the sign that says do not block crosswalk, do not block cross is as you're leaving, because that was people were pulling out and, you know, they were pulling out and blocking the westbound lane to try to take in, take the left-hand turn to head east, and I think that's where...
There isn't one on the right.
And as you're...
On the entrance.
As you enter, I think, yeah, the sign says something about don't stack out into the road, something to that effect, and I, yeah, I don't know if everybody understood, really, is, when they're driving, they're like, what does that mean? What's the stacking?
Just don't block the crosswalk.
You know, we could say do not block the cross, just mirror the sign on the, on the other side, remove that one, and then, and then just mirror the sign, it's, it's, we can handle that.
You've got a good job, it's, and there are times when, you know, Sunday morning after church, what are you going to do? And, and then, everybody's walking out of their car.
Right. And there's, and we did actually go over this when there were, after the drive-thru was installed, there were people that came in with complaints about that, and in the end, it's, those are regulations for, of, I mean, they're, they're in the, the driving manual. Those are driving regulations that people are violating state law, because it's, there's a state law that says you're not supposed to block
A crosswalk.
the crosswalk.
That's also a marking intersection, either.
Right, so it's, so there's only so much, I mean, they can hook the signs, but there's only so much that a business owner, if somebody's not going to follow the, the...
Doing a good job.
Yeah.
All right, just one note that Camila came up with, it, it looks like the special permit is only good for one year, so you'd be fine with that?
No, that should be fine, as long as, if it was six months, I might have a problem, but one year, I'm...
Is that one of the conditions for a, a special permit, like it's one of the mandates?
You mean, does it have to be one year, or can it be different?
Can it be different? I mean, because I think it's actually stated in the special permit.
I think it can be more than a year of the board's...
Well, he's okay with a year, so it's just like a year.
Yeah.
But like the site plan, it has a different condition, it's usually like four years.
Yeah, yeah.
You can always come back.
Right. He's going to have it, he's going to have it down to six months anyhow, so it's going to be...
Let's, let's hope things get...
God willing, there's lumber available.
Yeah, everything, I mean, the, the lead times, as many people have told you, have gone from weeks, or months, to maybe six months for some, for some stuff, so.
All right, any other comments around the, oh, okay, so I...
Just a motion here.
Oh, go ahead.
Scott Fugizi for eleven Union, thank you. The plans look great, I did have a couple of questions, the first question is the landscaping, are you going to redo any of this?
I, I wasn't, usually on the exterior, it would be, everything would be pressure washed and everything, but...
The reason is, is a patch where the old sign would be, I don't know.
I know that does yield electrical marks, but I can, understood.
The other thing is, he mentioned that the signs, I walk by them, I'm a pedestrian, I've had to walk around, so the, the both signs would be good, and the exit and entrance is, is a pedestrian, you know, you walk, you're walking by, I've had to walk literally into the, the landscape in the case, you know? But it has gotten better and stuff, so the plans look good, and it's going to be a full interior remodel, and needs to be cleaned up a little, I think it's a little dated. I've been in some of the new ones in No, and they look much nicer, so.
I just did that, I did, I did the one on next to the fire station.
In No, and yeah.
No drive-thru, so it's going to look, it's going to...
It's going to look good, yeah, thank you, all right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Go ahead. I got a, I got a great idea. You got a sign at each end that do not block the sidewalk, so maybe you want to put Millis Dunkin', you can put Millis, thank you, Millis Dunkin' underneath it.
Okay, do not block the sidewalk?
Yeah, you know, you're going to, you've got one on one end, put it on the other and just say, and that's where the Millis Dunkin'.
Yeah, the Millis runs on Dunkin'.
Millis runs on Dunkin', and put it in your colors.
Is that a second sign though? Are we, are we doing the same thing?
No, because it's not in the building.
It's not on the building. And the sign's already there.
Yeah, we're allowed one freestanding and one on the building, correct?
But both of, but these are not, both of these signs are, they're safety signs.
Right, they're not...
So those wouldn't go, and, and, and both signs in the entrance and exits were, in the, when they first came, came forward for the drive-thru, those were specific conditions of our special permit, that we wanted those signs there, so, yeah, I don't see any reason why, we, we've asked, we've required that the signs be there, but they could still put the Dunkin' logo, you know?
And I think we tweaked, I think we tweaked, if I remember memory serves, I thought we tweaked the wording on some of the things, but...
Just trying to get people to...
Do not block the sidewalk, definitely.
Thank you, Millis, Millis runs on Dunkin', maybe a couple of them will look at it.
Let's hope.
So, there we go.
All right, all right, everyone good?
Yep.
All right, I make a motion that we approve the special permit.
Close the hearing.
Well, that's a public hearing, sorry. I make a motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Motion's being seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, I make a motion that we approve the special permit for, it's a, it's a plan approval for renovation for the eight, seven, one Main Street Dunkin'.
With changes.
With the changes as we noted.
Second.
All right, motion's being seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, you survive.
Thank you very much, thank you for your time.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Yeah.
Good and needed. We're doing these, you know, most of these towns, the stores are all about the same age, so we're just going, you know, doing all the same things, so I will need a lot of work, but thank you very much for your time.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it, no rush, thank you.
All right, so, next item on the agenda, Owen, Melissa, you were supposed to give me the heads up, that I think we're done with you, and you...
All right.
Oh, go ahead.
Are you able to draft a decision for Dunkin' Donuts?
Yeah, I can, I can draft something, yep.
We'll let Kaitlin do it, good practice.
I would, when I say I, I mean Caitlin.
So that was, what if I spelled errors in it, instead of sending it back to you?
Yes, when Melissa said I'll do it, it was the general I, you know?
Caitlin did, Caitlin did...
Like the royal we.
Most of this review for the Dunkin' Donuts, so she did a good job.
So if it was approved tonight, I have two weeks to file it in the town department.
Two weeks, okay. Two weeks.
So you'll have it tomorrow morning? I get, I need to work, my computer goes on at six forty-five.
Okay.
All right? All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, other business, responsibilities and expectations of Planning Board members documentation discussion. So when we were going through, and the Select Board actually had done something similar to this, we realized that we really had no specific, you know, guidebook for, for the Planning Board, so it seemed to make sense, since the, the Select Board did it in the spring, that we should follow suit, and go ahead and, and do the same thing for ours. So we've put together, basically, it's a, not many pages, I think, six, eight pages of, of items that a Planning Board member, some of them are by law, and some of them are, some of them are, actually, most of them are actually required, so I do want to go through, I'm not going to go through and read the whole thing, these will be on the website. We have a, I'm just going to start off and do the, the highlights, the...
Oh, sorry, your copies don't have the highlights, I apologize, if you can tell our copies, if you want to look at them, to see what's to be discussed.
I have, I have a color one.
Okay, so the authority role of the Planning Board, so that's basically, you know, it's from the master general laws that were established. Then we have responsibilities of the Board, so the, some of the responsibilities are administering the subdivision control laws, review and endorse plans, approval not required, site plan review board, special permit granting authority when indicated by the Town of Millis zoning bylaws, administer the seating road act by recommend ending the designated street to seating road to the town meeting, draft and propose amendments to Millis zoning bylaws, we did that chicken one, which was one of our highlights, establish, maintain, and update the official zoning map of the Town of Millis, and create, update, present for adoption a master plan. Then we have the organization of the Planning Board, so the Board shall consist of five elected members, each for a five-year term. Elections shall be on a rotating basis, so one seat will be up each year.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
That first sentence, that, that first paragraph, that is a provision under our charter.
I said some of these are already established, so I'm not, what I'm saying is that we're, we're not re, you know, I'm not reinventing the wheel on this, I'm just making sure that that's part of what we're supposed to do.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to point out that that was actually in our charter as well, so.
Okay, well, that's good, so that means we picked a good point to make sure we put in our, in our requirements. So what else? In event of vacancy, an elected position occurring for any reason other than the expression of the term, such a vacancy can be filled by members of the Select Board, applaud recommendation of the native members of the Planning Board, which we've done before. of the main members of the planning board, which we've done before. One associate member of the planning board shall be appointed by board of selection for a term of one year, such associate members to act on special permits. The chairman of the planning board, when acting as special granting authority, may designate the associate member to sit in this board for the purpose of acting of a special permit application in case of the absence or the inability to act or conflict of interest of part of any member of the planning board, or in event of a vacancy in this board. So like, this one that is, has come up, that I am unable to be on, because I have a conflict of interest, and I think Alan will have a conflict of interest, so you would have, you would be filled in, because we can't, either, one of us could, could vote on that. So, the planning board shall annually elect a chairman and a clerk from among its own number, said election shall take place at the first meeting of the annual town of elections. So on this, this is a provision, and we, although we have not done that necessarily, so typically what's happened on the, instead of annually electing, we randomly elect chairman. If it's fine, if the board says they wanna do a, you know, yearly election, that's fine, I think there's something to be said for some consistency versus having a yearly, you know, shakeup of the board, but I, you know, I believe that open this, this discussion to the board of what your guys' thoughts is, because this is right now a draft. So then we have planning board members' duties and responsibilities, which basically is, we go through the review of special permits, approval not required, a lot of the stuff we've already gone through on that. Then we also go to the, to the standard of conduct for the board members, and some of this language I actually lifted from the select board's, their document, because it makes sense and it's pretty standard. Every board member shall strive to recognize that he or she is a member of a team, and shall abide by the all board decisions once a vote is taken, serve the public interest and conduct him or herself as to main public confidence of the planning board, recognize that all board members are elected by the committee, and each member's viewpoint, opinion, and vote is equal to that of every other member, recognize that as an elected official, he or she has an obligation to make decisions that they believe best support the entire committee, accept that being a planning board member is a means of unselfish public service, not an avenue for personal congressional benefit, abide by all open meeting and public record laws as they apply to elected municipal officials, familiarize him or herself and understand the town of Millis social media policy, this will be used to enforce any communications outside the board meetings, and along with that, that would be something that we should make sure that we've all read the social media policy, because there's things where, where, you know, not supposed to be posted during meetings, and you're not supposed to be commenting on items that are ongoing in the town on social media, you can do it as a private citizen, but you can't speak for the board on those matters, usually what happens is, it usually gets messy if you didn't.
Well, I'm not on it, it doesn't matter.
Refrain from making any statements or promises on how he or she will vote on matters anticipated before the board until he or she has an opportunity to hear all sides of the issue at a board meeting, make decisions only after the facts and information on issue presented and discussed, uphold the intent of the executive session, and respect the privileged qualification that exists therein, and treat each board member, applicant, resident, and presenter with a respective courtesy despite any potential perceived differences of opinion. And with that, I have to say that some people that I have had an opposing viewpoint with, I've actually gotten a lot of information from them, and have actually, you know, I've actually learned from having somebody that had a polar opposite thought of what I had, which is something that I've, over the past several years, have learned, you know, it's good to have people that have an opposing viewpoint, because they're looking at it differently than you are, and so I think that's actually a good thing. Conflict of interest, so we have to go by the conflict of interest rule, so attendance, attendance at all meetings is strongly encouraged, if a member misses a meeting, he or she should watch the recording of the meeting on cable access and/or review the meeting minutes prior to the next meeting. In event of a public hearing, the member shall certify that he or she has examined all evidence received at the hearing or meetings they were unable to attend, if a member misses two public hearings on an application, he or she will be ineligible to vote on that application. That is actually, there's actually a rule.
Yes.
Which, name escapes me.
Well, the town adopted the Mullen rule.
It's the Mullen.
Which allows a person to miss one couple of hearings by the day, please the members to watch the meeting.
So this is basically, if you're not there, and you're, you know, we don't, we, if you're not really competent to vote on a matter, that you really have nothing to, you know, go in, no action on. Members must alert the administrative assistant and chair if they'll not be able to attend the meeting as soon as possible, preferably twenty-four hours in advance, to allow the administrative assistant the opportunity to confirm there'll be a quorum. So, we need to be careful, because we've had applicants come in, and due to the, so, some issues, we didn't realize we didn't have a quorum, so we don't want to have that happen going forwards if we can, so that's something we wanna try to make sure that everybody lets us know if you can, we understand things come up. Two consecutive or unexcused absences within a year by a member will be known by the chair in the minutes, the chair may contact the member of a second consecutive or unexcused absence to remind the member of the importance of their presence at the meetings, and their responsibility as an effective elected official. After three or more absences, the board may consider a censure of the member at a regularly scheduled meeting. So, you know, we want everyone to show up, obviously, if things happen, somebody's sick, whatever, that's something we could discuss, but I, you know, we have to set a minimal, minimal set of expectations for people being here. So, you know, I know we've come into snowstorms, provided the town hall's not closed, we're here, and, you know, usually, we all make a good effort, we just wanna try to make sure that, going forwards, or in the future, that that expectation is carried along. So, this is a draft, if there are any comments that you guys wanna make on it, I would like to try to, if not pass it, or go through and review this, this meeting, would like to try to get this set, so it's out of the way.
Do you want to vote on the next meeting for the board?
Yeah, do you, do you guys wanna do that, take it home, read it over, and look? Okay, that's good, why don't we send, we'll send a meeting, send a vote for this on the next meeting, so.
Do you want email comments in the interim, or just while we?
Yep, email, yeah, email them to, you can send them to Camille, and that way, if you have any comments or.
Just to make it headed though, just to make it highlighter, a different color, so that's moving.
Yep. And then that way, we just have a baseline for what we're, what we should be doing. All right, next item. Proposed special permit condition, Alan handled. So we looked at this last time.
Yep, Alan made some edits, and he, I emailed it again, and it's.
Yep, so with it, I think it was still, well, there was still, you made the, you made the changes, I think the thing was, there were still one or two questions, oh, okay, so one of those ones was, we, there was concern of the disciplinary, possible disciplinary action, including suspension of the special permit. So the only thing with that is, we have not sent this to town council, yeah, because we wanna try to get everything settled. The question was brought up was, the failure of somebody to answer questions of concerns of the neighbors, if that, if that made the special permit become null and void, that seems like an excessive punishment, you know what I mean? So, I, no, and I'm just bringing it out there, it's just, you know, it's obviously the big stick, however, if we use the big stick, we might get sued, so, that might be something we may wanna.
I would think that would be something to discuss when, if the problem arises, how we wanna address it. If we don't have the stick available, then there's no deterrent.
All right, well, that's a point.
So, Mr. Chair, for me, really, the biggest concern, and this is just coming from somebody who's been trained to think of five million different ways something can go wrong, and trying to mitigate it, this is what they brainwash you to do in school. So, the reason why we would approach town council to address this is because we wanna be as specific as possible, when it talks about a failure to abide, there are a myriad of ways, looking at the language, that somebody could fail to abide by the provision or the condition that we put here, so you have to be very specific as to what a failure to abide means, does that mean, you know, how frequently are they updating the website? If somebody asks one question, and they don't get back to them right away, are we hearing from this person in the planning board requesting that we, you know, not necessarily revoke their special permit, but that counts as a strike, is that an arbitrary use of our police powers? So, we, that's just something you'd wanna mitigate, and get some advice on from town council in particular, before you move forward, not saying that this should be null in its totality, these are just ways you wanna mitigate before you try and finalize any, any, any action that we could take as a board.
Yeah, I agree, we should have, I actually wanted to get the town council's info here.
Yeah, no, we, we're done, we just, like I said, so don't, don't take it like we're.
No, 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 I'm agreeing.
Yeah, these, these are things that we should, you know, we should get, understand that that's something that we should say, hey, you know, can you fill in these blanks on that? The only other thing is, to make sure that, because when it's said on it, the requirement that the developer, and I guess that is clear, maintain the website, we just wanna make sure it's clear that, basically, that, that link, or the website, or whatever, is gonna come out from the planning board to whatever abiders, or it'll be part of the decision, and that we're done with it, we will not be, we're not gonna answer phone calls, Camille is not gonna get emails.
Well, that's, I think that's my question, is the developer going to give me the link to their website, and I just have to one time upload that link to the planning board's webpage, and then I'm done, I'm not monitoring anything, I'm not changing anything, I'm not, I'm just putting a one-time link to the project's developer's website, I'm not doing anything other than that. Okay, I just wanted to.
And then I, well, and I'm just, thinking now, bringing up Josh's thing of, you know, thinking of the five thousand things that could go wrong, so.
Welcome to the board.
The question is, and I'm just thinking aloud, so, Mrs. Smith had a dump truck go by her house at ninety-five miles an hour with three guys hanging out, and she emailed the developer, and he did get back to her, or said, you know, we'll send two next time. How do we, how could we know if there was, how do we know how that exchange happened? You know what I'm saying?
Right, well, it's not, if it's raised to the point of a dispute, it's gonna come to us anyway. So, here's a situation where the neighbor, you know, we've seen it, just in my short time here, we've seen things of neighbor complaints on existing projects, right, so this would be a way to hone it in, say, well, you know, they cut down all the trees yesterday, I was out in my yard, nobody told us anything, so, we're not gonna pull the permit at that point necessarily, but you now have at least some framework, where you can say, look, you're supposed to be communicating with these people, like the assistant, you know, once, once we got involved in the communicating, people see that.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's, I think more about the discussion and keep them communication open than anything else, listen quiet, we call them in, we be complainant, and, you know, we advise them to do better, is the most likely situation, most of the time.
Right, well, you know, and then the only other thing is, is, and I'm just thinking, you know, because from the, from the building end, you know, we make a lot of noise, and we drive big trucks, so, people are gonna complain, so, you know, if there's a whole bunch of complaints, let's say, somebody decided that they, well, I've had enough of these trucks, I'm gonna put in forty-five complaints to them, you know, how, how do we deal with that?
Well, in all due respect, Mr. Chair, I don't think the example that you've just given has anything to do with Alan's proposal, this proposal has to do with notifying people in advance.
Yeah.
People are gonna have complaints regardless of whether they have, regardless of what a builder does, regardless of how many restrictions we put in, somebody's gonna upset someone, but, and I do like the idea of trying to come up with a way of encouraging that open line of communication. As Josh put it, we are drilled to take every sentence and, and look at the worst-case scenario. So, in this format, responses to questions should be addressed in a timely manner. So whose definition of timely manner, is it my, is it me as the person that is asking the question, I'm asking the question this morning, and I'm thinking that I should get an answer by, within the business day, is it you, the builder, who is not attending to his email because he's out building, and he does that, you know, the next day, or what have you, because as you said, your computer goes on at six-thirty, if you've answered your emails, and I've emailed you at eight, I mean, you know, is it the planning boards, so the, while I understand the concept of trying to leave it a little flexible, sometimes being flexible can bite us all in the backside. And, and again, you know, saying penalty, obviously, if we were to say, failure to abide will make you, you know, we're gonna drag you back in, and we're gonna tell you do better, well, nobody's gonna, nobody's, okay, so what, that means I gotta come, go to Millis at seven-thirty one night, but on the flip side, I honestly, and obviously, we need to get town council, I, I don't know that that's grounds for a suspension of a permit, because a, a builder, a developer, is not communicating with a butter or a neighbor, and, and how are we, how are we, how are we defining the butters? Is it only the people that are on the four sides, or six sides, or however many sides of the property, is it within two hundred feet, three hundred feet, five hundred feet, is it, you know, I think there's a lot that we still need to.
It's almost like we need a definitions section.
Yes, it's, exactly.
Where you have definitions, a butters equals this, and.
My fear is if you get too rigidly defined, it bogs it down and gets away from what we're trying to do, you know, we're saying butters and other local residents, that, that gives us a little leeway, and, and we're not, we don't have any exact prescribed penalties, because we don't wanna be in a situation where we have to force an action, again, just trying to guide the communication, nobody wants to come in here and have a meeting on a Tuesday dinner, and they've been working all day, and, you know, they'd rather just communicate today instead of three days later, if it makes the residents happy and they're not gonna get dragged in. A timely manner means, if something's gonna happen Wednesday, don't wait till Thursday and tell them about it, you know, you know what's gonna go on, maybe you don't have to, you know, turn the memo around the minute you get it, but let people know so they can make their plans, again, which is the whole basis of us trying to do this.
We would just need to make sure that we fall outside of the purview of like arbitrary and capricious standards, so we can't create any level of governance that is, that is viewed as arbitrary, just something that's kind of open-ended, so I think to Nicole's point, we just have to make sure, and I, the spirit of it totally makes sense to me, and a lot of this, I think you could actually put into practice, we just have to make sure that you define it enough, and make sure that we actually have the ability to enforce any type of, I don't even wanna call it penalties, but any type of action against a developer that doesn't, that doesn't comply with the terms of the condition that we would put on the special permit anyway, which I'm sure we have plenty of recourse, but it would be nice to double-check to see what, what that could be, because we just can't have like this open-ended.
So should we take this, should we take this, throw it to Jay, and say, hey, Jay, if we wanted to do this, should we, what, what else should we be adding to this? Get some feedback from him, and then we'll kick it. Get some feedback from him and then we'll kick it around at the next meeting?
Yeah, and I'd, I'd really like to see what, where recourse is the planning board in particular for failure to comply with the condition of a special permit, right? This is something that we want to attach, right? That's up to our discretion. So.
So why don't you send?
Because we also have to remember that we are not the enforcement agent.
Right.
Mike is the enforcement agent. So I don't know if it would be appropriate to be bringing Mike into this conversation.
Let's, let's start off and send those couple of questions, we'll send them to Jay, have him look at it, get his opinion, and then we'll come back to the next meeting and he can fill that, including your question.
Because he may take a look at it and know, because what you're looking for is just a special condition like this, it's not going to be a zoning law, we have definitions of everything.
And we can change it.
It's just going to be, right, it's going to be something, but the point across, I think this summarizes the point the planning board's trying to make. So let Jay take a stab at, he may have wording already, you know, there is something like this already.
Go ahead, I don't feel like I need to own this myself either, someone wants to rewrite paragraphs.
No, 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 and this, this isn't pick on Alan, Dave, it's, I'm glad you took the time to do it.
No, I, I absolutely agree. I mean, I do want to find a way to encourage communication because in the end, we're here to make life, you know, appropriate for, we don't want to make issues for the townspeople. And, you know, we work with the developers, they come in, but it's, it's, we're here for the benefit of the townsfolk. And I absolutely do, you know, want to see what we can do. I think, you know, as Josh said, the spirit of this, I absolutely am behind you 100%. And I think it is, it's, and it, it may very well be, you know, that Josh and I are just used to walking that tightrope, you know, done it one too many times and, you know, sometimes fear the worst. But, yeah, I, I do, I absolutely support the, the idea that, you know, encouraging this. And every developer, you know, even if you've got somebody, a, a small developer, if they're doing four units, they've got the, they've got some sort of digital capacity that they can, if it's as simple as posting a schedule once a month, update, you know, whatever. Yeah, I don't.
And I personally, if I could throw a mic to sense, I think it's a great idea as well, because currently I get inundated with emails from people asking questions about all the development that's going on in town and, you know, this complaint of trucks going up and down the street. So I personally think it's a great idea and just a way to incorporate that to make the developer more communicative with, I think it's a great idea if we can put that condition in there and then we can back it up. It's my support.
All right, so to take away this, wait, oh, hold on, is, so email those couple of items quick.
Thank you, thank you. I just want to thank the planning board and the time I've been coming, you guys have been awesome, holding developers accountable and still welcome Josh, and it's great to see somebody new on the board take the ball and run, but you guys have been awesome. Thank you.
George, go ahead.
I, I agree with this whole thing and I think we, we need to do something. There isn't a, that I was scanning through what Bob Weiss came up with. We've got a lot of projects that are coming up, you know, some of them unfortunately we're not involved in because they're 40Bs, but they're also in residential neighborhoods. Okay, so, you know, and I think this also is something the building inspector can come up with. I mean, if, if they do that one down on Dwight Street on the corner, I mean, yes, it's right next to Tresca, but it's across the street from a lot of other, you know, homes. You've got another one down by the Bowlin Alley that's going to come up.
Well, that's, that's a good segue, because you know what I was going to read right next, was I was going to go through this whole list of things.
Like too, and I, I, you've brought, George has brought up a really good point in that if this is something we can get confirmation through town council, even though these 40Bs don't come to us, it is something them, we should probably turn over to the select board and say, hey, this is what we're incorporating into special permits now. Take a look at it and see how can this be?
We could do that, I'm not sure, basically with the 40B, they get away with skirting a lot of stuff.
I know, but there are, there are enough 40Bs that are, I mean, yeah, you, you've got people that walk in and say, I'm a hostile 40B, but.
Right, we could ask the question, what I would say about this, yeah, I think that was, that's about the best we could do.
Once, once they get their permits, they come under the purview of the building inspector because they're building a, a building.
Right.
Okay, so this could, he could incorporate this as well. All right. In other words, if the guys are showing, of course, we are, we have the, the basic bylaws, you can't start before seven, but like the one down the corner at Dwight Street, where are they going to park all those trucks when they start moving those things?
Right.
You know, we have no control over that, so they're going to be lined up on 109 and down Dwight Street?
Well, that's the ZBA, they make their decisions, they wouldn't want to give you a chance.
Well, then we need to send this to them too.
That's what I'm saying, you've got other boards to take advantage of the condition.
This could be, you know, and you've got, you do have friendly 40Bs that if it's presented and we already have something that's been approved by town council and that we're incorporating in other things, and whether it's the ZBA, whether it's the board of selectmen is presenting that, you know, even if it doesn't have the same weight of enforcement, if it's presented them, so this is what we're encouraging, this is what we're asking you to do, again, if you're big enough to build, be building a 40B, you're big enough to put up a digital, you know, appearance.
And they're still required, you know, by bylaw to put up, you know, no Sunday work, blah, 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 blah. And that's, that's part of the bylaws. It's not, it's not, not on us. So, so I think it should go to all the other boards, including the ZBA. I know sometimes they do things a little strange over there, but, you know, but it also, the, the Mike is the final enforcer.
All right, well, let's, let's keep on pushing it a little bit and see where, see what Jay has to say and we'll, we'll circle back.
Yeah, don't say you don't own it, because you want to take, you want to take credit for it when it goes through.
I'm going to take credit. He's going to have his own, he'll have his own digital thing.
Here we are now and everyone will be sending you emails.
All right, so I'm going to.
We'll name it the Alan Rule.
All right, I'm going to whip through the, the projects that are ongoing right now that Georgia mentioned. Anthology at Milistopper Room Residences, they're actually starting to do work on that. So they're actually moving after it being stopped. Regency at Glad Ellen, they've progressed on to Phase 3B, which I actually drove by and the roads are, they've got everything roughed out out there, so they're cooking right along. Cannabis Business 617 Therapeutics, they had a Phase 1 Devolition Permit issue, issued and then their, the noise and odor nuisance review is in process. GTE, the host agreement has been signed, that's what we just, just passed the site and approval. So they're going to move on to the next step. Adversa Wellness, 1375 Main Street Manufacturing, they had a outreach meeting on July 8th, I haven't turned anything, deal with that. The Coll Building, they finished the solar panels, so we won't have to talk about that anymore. 114 Union Street, which was the old Hermite True Building, the 20-day appeal process is passed with no appeals. Woodlands, that is the cottage half, they're still working on developing that. 232, 248 March Road, Dwight Street, ZBA closes public hearing at the September 27th meeting, decision will be voted on within 40 days. That's the 40B project that's going on there. Seven Water Street GTW Building, they are on track for 1115 occupancy. So the staff building is substantially complete, the, the garage, they've got all the exterior panels on, they're waiting for garage doors, they're getting ready for pave soon, so that is cooking right along. Sparhawk Academy, they've actually built the building, so it's actually up, they put the roof on it in the past couple of days, so that's moving right along. 1344 Main Street, there was some safety traffic concerns cited by staff, next step is the ZBA's public hearing to be scheduled. Emerson Place, they have cleaned the trees and Nader's been taking a, taking a look at that. Town Center Planning Initiative, that one, a final report based on the town's response will be, will be published shortly. They gave their preliminary study to the select board on June 28th. Bigelow Fund Solar, we were just waiting for the attorney general's feedback on that, that was the, that was the Fireman Solar bylaw, which is expected later than November 15. 377 Villas Street, the Bronn Property, funding's been secured, closing in mid-October, the select board voted to authorize the property's purchase at its September 27th meeting, so we, we've actually given ready to buy the property. PFAS, which is the, the forever chemicals they found in, or actually they've changed the rules to the EPA, so they're, they have a lower threshold for these chemicals. And so now the towns are required to treat the water for them. They have a, they have a design now is at 60% and it should be 100% by mid-October. Final cost will be $5.6 million for a treatment plant to basically get those chemicals out of the water. And just so everyone knows, the, the levels of the chemicals are very, very small. What happened was the DP has actually lowered it, so it's equal to like a teardrop in Olympic sized swimming pool. But the, the government feels that they're dangerous enough that town should deal with it, except they don't give us funding to do it, they just say, you have to fix it and we have to go on our own and figure out how to, figure out how to fix it, so that's, that's out of the way. And we also had a quarterly development, property development meeting with the, with the.
All the town departments.
All the town departments. They're going to do that quarterly to go over construction in the town and to help the town figure out best ways to promote our town and, and develop underutilized properties. So. Next item on the agenda would be the approval of the meeting minutes from, let's see here, September 7. So I read the meeting minutes and they were wonderful as usual. I make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes, meeting minutes from September 7.
Second.
All right, motion's been made in second and all in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. Our next meeting is November 9.
And we have to set our 7th, 7/14, that Alan was available by 7, so we're going to address 14 tomorrow.
Which day are you looking for?
7th or 14th.
Well, I have such an exciting social calendar that I'm available.
Oh, I handed this the 7th already, which is fine, we can, but we, Alan, you have something to switch on?
Yeah.
No, that's fine.
Supposed to be on vacation that week.
Well, you, you know, I keep up during my vacation time.
Going to be on a ship in the Caribbean.
Can't you have them make a detour?
You could zoom, don't you?
I probably could.
There you go, what the hell?
What?
You could zoom.
Well, who knows, by December we may be, they may be making a zooming.
14.
14.
14. Thank you.
And what was November?
November 9.
November 9 and 12, 14. Town meeting is November 8?
Yes.
Okay, so I think.
Do you want to set January or wait till November to set January?
That's way, yeah.
Was there any, any other items anyone have? All right, I think that was it. So I make a motion to adjourn. All right, motion's been made in second and all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, everybody.
What I don't understand is you get paid, you get paid overtime to zoom.
I don't. I certainly don't.